Coeur d'Alene City Council, and it is December 3rd. Thank you. 6:00 PM. Anyway, roll call, please.
English.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
Gookin.
Not guilty.
Evans. Miller.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
All right. The invocation couldn't make it today, so we're gonna have Caitlin Fisher from Troop 2121 from the Girl Scouts is gonna lead us in the invocation. So if you would rise, please.
Pledge.
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 Yeah.
Pledge.
Trying to put pressure on you, Caitlin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to have Caitlin introduce all her troop girls, and then Brian's gonna do a little speech about the girls and Girl Scouts. So go ahead, Caitlin.
Hey Caitlin, can you go up to the microphone because anyone watching can't hear you if you're over there. Perfect.
So my name is Caitlin Fisher, and over there we have everyone's what? And then we have Anna Warren and Elizabeth what? Myers.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, now their grandparents want to see them on TV, and we can't see them at all. What's...
Where do they need to stand?
I'm not sure. Where's a good camera? Maybe over in front of Troy?
All right, over right to our girls while I just talk about...
I know you've got an important...
We're right behind that. Okay.
I'm Brian Uvery, head of Girl Scouts Eastern Washington and very proud of Northern Idaho, CEO. I think I'm not guilty as well. So I appreciate you letting us come here. Mayor and City Council members, I... We are celebrating the Day of the Girl, which is actually about a month and a half ago. I'm sorry about that. But I love coming to Coeur d'Alene. To the residents out there, you live in a beautiful community, and it's very important for me to come here and recognize these Girl Scouts and tell you, girls, that your voice matters. Never forget that your voice matters 365 days a year. And so that's why we have the Day of the Girl, is to get in front of City Council members and say, our girls matter. And I am so happy this year, we hit 1,000 Girl Scouts in Idaho.
Wow.
For the first time in a long, long time, if not ever. So 1,000 Girl Scouts out of 3,000 ain't bad. That's what I'm saying. Because that northern panhandle is pretty darn narrow compared to all of Eastern Washington. But you know what? Your city matters. These girls matter. And just here, not but two weeks ago, I'm joined by my CEO Renee Smock, we did a cruise on Lake Coeur d'Alene. We saw 109 eagles, our national mascot. And as a veteran, I couldn't be prouder. And the girls who got to go do that were girls who helped donate 39,000 boxes to our US service members. Many of those cookies sent overseas, many of those given here in the last month, and some going to be given this Friday to one of the last surviving Pearl Harbor spouses in Spokane, that she's there. So your girls care about America. They care about you. And the last thing is just to end on City Councilwoman Miller here. She is a proud Girl Scout. She's got a sash to still prove it. She came to a democracy badge we had about a month ago. It was with four other women legislators from around the region, all of Eastern Washington, Northern Idaho. We had about 50 girls there that night. They were so engaged. They were just like these girls. They just want to make the world a better place. And they know that democracy matters. Thank you, Councilwoman Miller, for being there that night and giving the Idaho-Coeur d'Alene perspective. And the last thing I'll say as I finish up tonight, we just... I just went by Louise Shattuck over there. I've not noticed that statue over there. She brought 12,000 girls to Northern Idaho in 1965, the biggest roundup we've ever had, the last roundup that Girl Scouts had. And the Boy Scouts came three years later. When you go up to Farragut, there's a little, small monument to Girl Scouts, a huge one for Boy Scouts. We love Boy Scouts. But you know what? Our Girl Scouts matter as well. Thank you, Louise, for recognizing the girl voice matters. God bless you, City Council. God bless America, and the Day of the Girl matters as well. Thank you.
Yay.
Going to read the proclamation for you folks.
That was done so well. That democracy meeting was so great. I am proud that I got to get involved with that. And it does give you great hope for the future, listening to those questions. But this proclamation, which was supposed to be read in October, I'm going to read it real quickly now. October 11th, 2024 marks 12 years since the United Nations adopted Resolution 66170 to declare October 11th as the International Day of the Girl, to recognize girls' rights and the unique challenges girls face around the world. And whereas the world's premier leadership development organization for girls, Girl Scouts has emphasized public service, civic engagement, and fostering a sense of community in girls for over a century. And whereas in these incredibly challenging times, Girl Scouts provides community and connection for girls, and is a safe haven in all the uncertainty. And it celebrates our biggest year ever of camp in our iconic Idaho resident camp. And whereas despite a worldwide pandemic, Girl Scouts in this council adapted and overcame to grow to 4,200 girls last month, the most since 2013, and vow to continue growing to provide girls optimism and adventure. And whereas Girl Scouts offers 21st century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills. And whereas International Day of the Girl focuses attention on the need to address the challenges girls face and to promote girls empowerment and the fulfillment of their human rights. And whereas on the 12th anniversary of celebrating the specialness of girls, we are reminded more than 50 million women are Girl Scout alums as role models to the 1.1 million Girl Scouts, and we recognize and honor the 1.1 billion girls across the globe who make the world a better place. So therefore, I, Kiki Miller, reading for Woody McKeever, Mayor of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2024, as International Day of the Girl.
I love your scarf. Can you just line up there real quick when you do a quick picture?
Get everybody in there.
Thank you, Council, for coming outside.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys all for being here.
Merry Christmas. Thank you, dude.
Merry Christmas.
So Renata, you got to follow that act.
Great job. Great job.
All right. We have a presentation on the Downtown Association Farmer's Market Summary from Renata Cloud. Thanks, Renata.
Absolutely. All right. This is just a little follow-up to an action you guys took in August that allowed the Downtown Association to do a pilot project for open container in the farmer's market area. And as you may know, the farmer's market area is along Fifth Street between Lakeside and Front Avenue, and it does have vehicular opening on Sherman Avenue. So the Downtown Association provided a summary of some of the feedback they got from vendors and a little bit of narrative of what happened each week. They were able to do this pilot project for about four weeks in the month of September. And while they note that the large amount of setup time, the hiring of additional security, and the need for customers to finish the alcohol beverages before they cross Sherman Avenue were downsides, there were no law enforcement interactions, and so that was one of the positive takeaways of the pilot project. So they were able to have four events. And at this point in time, they are not requesting to pursue the open container project at the farmer's market for next year. They are weighing their options to bring back another option for other events, but they don't have any requests currently on the table. So this was really just an opportunity to give you guys a little bit of their summary, and that there were no large incidences, but the setup is quite tasking in order to contain the alcoholic beverages in that area. The PD wanted to make sure that it was clear that any future event, they would also be requesting to have the fencing to contain the alcohol in that area. So whatever they bring forward, that would be something to consider. And I know Captain Hagar is here in the audience, as is Emily Boyd with the Downtown Association, if you have any specific questions for them. With that, I will stand for questions.
Questions, Council?
Hearing none. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to say I appreciated the depth and the detail in this report, and that it came back timely. And you put forth a great effort to give it a try, and came up with just real sound evidence about, you know, the whole program. So I really appreciated the detail and everything that was in here. So thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving on to public comments. Russ McCann, all the way from the other side of town. Welcome, Russ.
Hi, guys. Well, first thing I've noticed, you remember when I gave my one freedom for three freedom speech? They haven't been back, so God must have thought I was right. I'm working on your museum over here, and it is fun. It really is a good time over there. And we got to the fire coats, where I have to fireproof a half-inch-thick steel beam to not burn for an hour. While there's a four-inch fire water line coming in for sprinklers and a three-inch fire line coming in for sprinklers, there's a redundancy there. I think they're... They could stand a professional oversight to see if maybe it's not a little redundant and expensive. Where I failed, and I failed, was using Benjamin Moore products. We all know they're superior product. And there's a thickness. And one coat's good for 10 minutes, two coats good for 30 minutes, three coats are good, but the paperwork stopped at two. The UL testings were fire-retarding on wood, not metal. Okay? So this stuff will keep wood from burning, two skinny little coats for a half hour. Wood, not steel. And I just think that there's a huge cost to the redundancy. And, you know, if I took this product and I sprayed all the studs, the floors, the plumbing, and everything, you would have your fire rating, and you wouldn't need drywall. You see? You wouldn't need sprinklers because I just met fire coat. And it needs a professional oversight. That's what I come to ask for. It's very expensive. Those guys, the little Brit that runs the show, she's terrific, and she's hustling money. It's all a donated thing. And to try to fire coat a house, you couldn't cut that thing with... What is it? Oxygen and acetylene? And, well, I think a little professional oversight. You know, I know, you know, I haven't forgot my car crash. You know, you guys, your fire department, they were outstanding. You know, they're true professionals. And if they can't make it there in an hour, be there in a minute, you know? And they're prepared. Well, anyway, I think that, you know, give it some serious look, and see if it's not a... You know, when it gets into workforce housing costs, you know, there's a lot of things that are redundant that maybe shouldn't be there, or maybe can be altered, something like that. But fireproof and a half-inch-thick steel beam, you know, that's kind of silly. Okay? So anyway, that's what I got to say. But anyway, it's a lot of fun. I've seen people I haven't seen in 30 years and telling stories and getting back, and it's a riot. It really is a lot of fun over there. Anyway, you guys have a good night.
Thanks, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Aaron Barnhart, come on down. How are you? Welcome.
Hi. FYI, your livestream is not going right now, so...
Okay.
Just to be safe.
We're working on that.
Short and sweet tonight, I applaud you, Council and Mayor Woody, in proclaiming October 11th as International Day of the Girl. This proclamation is a great thing. It recognizes the hardships that girls have to endure and overcome. And I believe it's a great step towards proclaiming the universal and biblical truth that boys are boys and girls are girls. I have great faith in you as a council and the mayor, that you will be continuing down the path of truth, and recognize the specialness of traditional family values, which strengthen society and benefits the children, the girls and the boys, whom should be protected at all costs. I look forward to seeing a proclamation soon about traditional family values, and thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you, Erin. Nancy Phillips, come on down. Welcome, Nance.
Evening, Council, Mayor. I wanted to come and speak to you about the home-delivered meals program. As of November 16th, well, go back, last month, I believe I came to see you in reference to a waitlist. Well, November 16th, the waitlist is now gone. So the area agency on aging was able to get the funds they need for the remainder of this year, up to June of 2025. So our seniors, anybody who's eligible, can now receive home-delivered meals. So that's a good thing. Just recently, at the community center, we did our first Thanksgiving meal, the first one since 2019. We fed 142 people. It was great. The majority of them were seniors of our community, and they came out, gathered, enjoyed each other's company, and it was a beautiful event. Currently, we're serving 121 homebound seniors here in Coeur d'Alene. We make an average of 2,500 meals that get delivered to them every month. 27% of that funding comes from area agency, and it does help provide meals. However, we have to come up with 73% of the funding through donations, fundraisers, and grants, such as the Community Development Block Grant. These funds are essential in helping us to maintain and expand the program. In order to maintain the level of service that we provide, we need to come up with $168,000 by donations and grants. As we approach the holiday season, at the center, we're hoping to make the Christmas a little bit better for the seniors. So we're doing a blanket drive. And we're aimed to give each homebound senior a blanket for Christmas, along with a goodie bag that's being provided by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. They all are donating some goods for the seniors. Our blanket drive has been going well, but we still need 94 blankets by December 19th, because we want to be able to deliver the first set of blankets on the 20th and finish up by the 23rd of giving them something for Christmas. I also want to take an opportunity to recognize our volunteers for the home-delivered meals program. We're doing a volunteers dinner on December the 11th for our volunteers. These volunteers, some of them have been driving and delivering meals for the last 25 years. So I'm hoping that some of you can make it to our dinner and show that these volunteers are greatly appreciated in our community. I am grateful for the continued support of the City Council, as well as the community. And as it grows in the program together, I hope we can expand it and reach more seniors. Thank you. Have a great Christmas.
Can I ask a question? Nancy, do we drop off the blankets at the senior center?
Yes.
And the dinner, I assume, is at the senior center?
Yes.
What time?
Six... So dinner starts at 5:00, and it'll end at 7:00.
Right. Thank you.
Hope to see you.
Thanks, Nancy. Suzanne Knudsen, come on down. You have a bonus minute. You've been collecting them all year.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Suzanne Knudsen. I live in Coeur d'Alene. I am a guardian of a person with physical and intellectual disabilities, and I am a friend to adults with different types of disabilities in North Idaho. Today, December 3rd, is International Day of Persons with Disabilities, IDPD for short. This day is observed annually on December 3rd since 1992. The theme for this year is amplifying the leadership of persons with disabilities for an inclusive and sustainable future. This theme recognizes the important role that persons with disabilities play in creating a more inclusive and sustainable world for all. It also emphasizes the importance of their participation in decision-making processes that affect their lives. Today, is an important opportunity to celebrate the contributions of persons with disabilities, and a time to reflect on their challenges that they face in our community, whether they live here or they are visitors. Some of the goals of IDPD are to promote the leadership of persons with disabilities in all areas of life, to ensure their inclusion in all aspects of society, increasing their participation in decision-making processes, raising awareness of the rights of persons with disabilities, and celebrating their achievements. These are not just arbitrary goals, but a call to action to greater personal awareness and movement toward greater inclusion for people with disabilities in our lives and in our communities. How can each of us become more aware? Consider finding some training through the ADA National Network, such as the Northwest ADA Center and Rocky Mountain ADA Center. Participate in a webcast, or a podcast, or in actual in-person training, or attend the annual ADA Symposium. If you need to know more about those, let me know. I'll get you some info. Take advantage of every opportunity to learn more about those with different types of limitations, and realize that you or someone you care for could eventually be in a similar situation. Several city staff and one council person did just that this summer, took advantage of an opportunity with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee Wheelchair Awareness Event this past August. Please include people with all types of disabilities and organizations that represent or serve them when projects for any type of city improvements are being considered. When we hear the word disability, most people think of someone in a wheelchair. This limited view of disability can affect how we establish accessibility and inclusion in our workplaces, as well as in government, commerce, travel and tourism, sports, social settings, and also churches. According to the CDC.gov website, 452,188 adults living in Idaho have some sort of disability. That is equal to 30%, or 1 in 3 adults. Not all disabilities are physical or visible. Disabilities include more than mobility limitations. Some examples of common disabilities include visual or hearing impairments, mental health conditions, intellectual disabilities, acquired brain injury, autism spectrum disorder, attention deficit disorder, neurodevelopmental disorders that are motor-related, such as cerebral palsy, or ALS, or MS. Consider capital improvements that are already in the works, and invite those with some of these types of disabilities to the table, and include them in the conversation and problem-solving. Ask for their input, and then include them in the process. These suggestions will also assist more than just the population of citizens of North Idaho who have disabilities, but also parents who are caretakers of young children, particularly those who use strollers, grandparents who take care of grandchildren and take them to parks, and older people. Let's all work together and help make Idaho a more accessible community. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Public comment? Hearing none, we're going to move on to City Council announcements. Any good stories? Mr. Happy down there?
Well, I don't know about a good story, but... And sometime maybe we should change that to City Council comments versus just announcements. But anyway, two things. One, I get to go to my first library board meeting tomorrow, where I'll be liaison. And so I appreciate Councilman Miller being willing to kind of swap Ignite and the library, and looking forward to that. The other thing is, about a week and a half ago, went to a legislative forum that they had, and specifically talked to Representative Alfieri from this district about, you know, the kind of kerfluffle that we had with our open council seat and doing that, and that, you know, other kinds of districts have a defined process. And I asked him, you know, who would be the one, you know, I said, this is a time when it's fresh in the minds, but there isn't anything, you know, pending right now, you know, where would I bring that kind of a thing? And he said, well, House State Affairs, and he's on that. So he's agreed to, you know, work with me. So I intend to kind of look at something, look at some of the other, you know, of course, run it by council and our attorney, but it would just be nice to, you know, if they could do something, and just basically, whatever it is, you know, come up with a set of rules, and that's the rulebook, and, you know, hopefully we won't have anything in the near future. But if we do, it's just, that's the time to have it before you really need it. So, anyway, that's my two cents. So...
So it felt like a nickel to me.
Okay.
Anybody else? Comments? Really?
Oh, well, I took... Okay.
All right. Moving on, I have an appointment of Sarah Garcia to the Ignite CDA Board, and Tracy Benson to the Arts Commission, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to appoint Sarah Garcia to the Ignite CDA Board, and Tracy Benson to the Arts Commission.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Anything other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on. Consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent calendars presented, including Resolution Number 24094.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 6EF, I think it is. Item 6F, I just wanted to point out that this contract with American Legion Baseball is for five years. Normally, it was for two years, and they went up to five.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yeah.
Great point, Councilmember Gookin. And it was at the American Legion request. They wanted to be... So it wasn't something that the city put out there. This has been a great partnership. They're very happy with it, and both parties are. And so they had both agreed and requested to do that.
Other discussion? Comments? Dan, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Looking for a motion? Oh, I got the motion. Need... Roll call, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yep.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
All right. Moving on. Resolution 24095. Glenn Palestraw, all the way from the Water Department. Welcome, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have a presentation for you for the recommendation of the lowest... The award the lowest response of quote for meter boxes from H.D. Fowler, in the amount of $85,378. On an annual basis, the Water Department tries to replace and upgrade approximately 200 to 300 water meter pit settings. A water meter pit is basically a avenue for us to access our water meter and some of the infrastructure that we would need to isolate the water from the household. And these meter pit upgrades can be a yardly service upgrade, which is basically a service line upgrade from the main to the water meter. It could be leaks that we would need to do a meter pit upgrade. Once we get in there and see old infrastructure, we try to update it as much as we can while we're there. These particular meter boxes were introduced to us in the city around 20 years ago, 20-plus years ago. We've looked at many different types of water meter boxes, and these type of boxes, as you can see on the screen, have kind of rose to the top as far as quality and reliability for us. And these meter boxes are just one component of the many components that it takes to upgrade a service line and a meter pit. Some of the pictures you can see here are some of the finished products and some of the open holes that we have to deal with when it comes to upgrading a meter pit. Three quotes were solicited from our normal vendors for 100 sets of armored cast meter boxes, and a set of meter boxes is basically three or four components. There's two bottom boxes, a top box, and a lid. H.D. Fowler was the lowest response of quote, with Consolidated coming in second, and Ferguson Water Works was non-responsive for some reason on this quote. We budgeted... The budget that this comes out of is the water main and maintenance budget of $800,000, and this is just a single component that comes out of that budget. And this will basically keep us busy throughout the summer for a majority of our water meter pit upgrades. Originally, the Water Department used concrete meter boxes in the past. These were large and cumbersome, and they were prone to cracking and being brittle, being concrete. These new meter boxes are like a polymer concrete, and they've got a fiber... These new meter boxes are like a polymer concrete, and they've got a fiber mesh, fiberglass mesh that is embedded into them, so they're very durable. We've had our crews put them through the wringer, and they hold up for the test of time, so. These also have a 15,000 and 20,000 pound rating, so we can put them basically in a driveway or in a street scenario if we have to, parking lot, and they hold up very, very well for Past practice has been purchasing smaller amounts, but with supply chain issues and costs going up, we always try to purchase in bulk to get the best deal that we can for the amount that we can. And typically, we would purchase these and be able to get 50 sets within a month's time or a month's and a half time, but a lot of times, we're seeing four to six-month lead times, so we have to purchase much larger amounts to get what we need, and much earlier. And with that, I would recommend that the council should approve the lowest responsive quote for the purchase of meter boxes from H.D. Fowler Company in the amount of $85,378. I would stand for questions.
Thanks, Glenn. Questions for Glenn? Glenn, how often do you have to change them, or do you just wait till they break, and then you put new ones in?
Anytime we're in the area, we definitely look up and down the roadways, see what needs replaced, so we can be most efficient. If we're replacing your meter box, and we see that the neighbor's is in disrepair, we try to kind of two birds with one stone type of thing. Oftentimes, with our yardly replacement projects, as I've presented before, we're going into whole developments, replacing service lines, upgrading meter pits, setters, water meters, so we try to knock out as much as we can while we're there. Otherwise, we're just responding throughout town with water leaks as needed to make repairs.
Gotcha.
Quick question, Glenn. Do you have people who purposely tamper with the meter boxes?
It's rare, but yes, we do.
And I think now's a good opportunity for you to educate them that there isn't really anything they can do, except break it.
Pretty much. It's one of those things, if, say, a mechanic was working on your car, and they broke something inadvertently, you would want them to replace it. We recommend to customers to call us, we've got 24/7 response, and we like to be the ones that touch our equipment. If we break it, we're responsible for repairing it, so.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you. Any other questions? I've got, I need a motion, if I could.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-095, approving the purchase of Armored Crest meter boxes from H.D. Fowler Company in the amount of $85,378 for the Water Department's annual maintenance and meter pit upgrades.
I'll second. Been moved, and seconded. None of motion, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Thank you. Glenn, one more time.
One more time for you. This is a presentation to award the lowest bid and approval of purchase and installation for a Myox brand chlorine generation unit from Filtration Technologies to be installed at Ralph Capallwell. We put out to bid for a chlorine generation unit, which I can explain what that is here momentarily, and we had a single bidder reply from Filtration Technologies for the amount of $124,725. And this is the, I just want to point out, this is a purchase and installation of this. In previous years, prior, prior to me starting with the Water Department 15 years ago, 100% gas chlorine was used as a disinfection agent to be injected into the water. And if anybody knows anything about gas chlorine, it is very toxic, very dangerous, it's something that you can't see. If it's inhaled, it basically creates hydrochloric acid with anything that it touches with moisture, so our eyes, our ears, everything like that. With its high volatility and dangerous in nature, we researched and found a MicroChlor unit, which is a different brand, but basically, it's a chlorine generation unit that takes salt and water, and introduces electricity to it, and that takes the salt molecule and divides it into two, and makes chlorine out of it. So, we can take that chlorine and use it to inject into the water system to, as a disinfectant agent. It basically creates less than half percent chlorine by volume, so it's much, much easier to use and work with. It's still very caustic, and we still have to, you know, use our gloves and our safety equipment, but it's not as deadly as gas chlorine is. We have multiple Myox units throughout the city installed in these wells as chlorine units that we would use for disinfectant. We advertised for bids for a 30-pound-per-day unit, which is capable of producing enough chlorine for a 4,200-gallon-per-minute well site, and Filtration Technologies was the only bidder that came back for this. This, I want to point out too, that we were budgeted at $123,000 for this, in our early stages of budgeting. We had a pretty good pinpoint of a number, but we had some unexpected price increases, so the extra amount would come out of the maintenance and pumping facilities budget to cover this amount. The Myox chlorine generation units use a high-grade food-quality salt, and that's put into a tank, and pulled out of that, electricity's introduced into a cell, basically, that has metal plates in it, and that's where the chemical reaction happens, and then that's diverted into the solution tank that we then pump into the water system. As you can see, this is an older unit that would be replaced. I think it's kind of difficult to see, but you can see this is where the cells happen, and then there's a transformer unit that introduces the electricity to make that chemical process happen. This is an example of a unit basically identical to what would go into the well, and then everything's housed inside this one box, just a slightly different style, different manufacturer. And with that, I would recommend that city council should approve the lowest responsive bid to Filtration Technologies to supply and install the Myox Chlorine Generation Unit in the amount of $124,725. I would stand for questions.
Questions, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glenn, you may not be able to answer this, but, so, salt is sodium chloride, you're taking the chlorine out of it, so you're deiodizing it, and you're taking the, breaking the molecule apart. What do you do with that sodium? What's, in other words, I don't even know if you know, there's a waste product here. Sodium is just as deadly as chlorine.
The only waste product that's generated that we have to off-gas is hydrogen.
Weird.
Which is vented out to atmosphere. Other than that, the entire solution from what comes out of the chemical process does go into the chlorine tank.
Really?
And we're told that it's a completely safe process for disinfection. It's approved by the State of Idaho DEQ and EPA, so.
Interesting, thank you.
Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glenn, there's a lot of things that go on at that plant that we have no idea how you do it, but thank you for keeping us safe. Just, this is a little off-topic of what you've come for, but I'm just, you talked about how dangerous it really is. What kind of safety equipment do you have? How often do you update your safety equipment?
So, for dealing with the liquid chlorine solution, we're wearing PPE, basically, glasses, plastic gloves when we handle that stuff. If we're working with the piping system, and we don't want to get it on us, otherwise, it's turning the clothes and breaking them down. With the gas chlorine, we were in a full SEBA setup to try to change a bottle of chlorine. It was that hazardous.
Is that similar to the turnouts, the fire?
Basically, the full air mask, and Councilman Gable could attest to that, and having the air bottle on your back, basically, a secondary breathing apparatus, so. We didn't like to have to do that, at all. And we trained with the Fire Department quite often. Basically, they were backup to us because we were trained fully on how to handle a spill or a leak, which we did have at one point that cost many thousands of dollars for replacement equipment. So, that's why we took the avenue to go to a much safer technique of disinfection.
And then, do you rotate your safety equipment pretty often?
Absolutely, yeah.
And it's built into our budget?
Yeah, it gets used up pretty regularly, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for keeping us safe.
You betcha.
Kiki.
Just one thing briefly, Glenn. In here, you said you only had one bidder respond. What's the staff process? This is a pretty specialized-sounding thing. What's the staff process for advertising for something like this?
So, anything over $100,000 per our purchasing policy has to go out to a public bid, and I believe that's advertised in multiple different avenues online, and I believe it goes in the paper as well. The other company that we had purchased before was MicroChlor, and they were, they're who we started with. Unfortunately, the company changed hands multiple times, and they were a good avenue, they were good competitors between Myox and MicroChlor. And since then, it's been super hard to source materials and replacement parts, and that was where we were kind of forced to, I mean, Myox kind of started rising to the top when it come to price, when we put out to bid for other units.
Yeah, I guess where, the crux of my thought process here is that when you have such a specialized item, it's not like putting a road job out to bid in the local regional paper. I mean, how would someone know that you were even looking for that unless you went to specific vendors that may be able to provide a bid to let them know? So, I'm just wondering if we're doing all the due diligence we can to get the best price.
Sure. And we have tried to do our research to find different companies that would be able to entertain a bid on this, and sometimes they're just not willing to give us a number if they're not locally sourced. I'm not quite sure the scenario of why they don't want to put in bids, but MicroChlor recently just reached back out to us. We hadn't heard from them for several years, and they were very interested in putting a bid in on this project, and told that they were going to, and we never did see or hear back from them after multiple attempts to reach out to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Jenny, got anything? Dan? All right. I have to ask, does every well have one of these? Is that the way it works?
Every well, not necessarily a Myox, but the MicroChlor brand as well. I believe we have two of the MicroChlor's left, and this would fulfill the last large-capacity well with the Myox unit.
So, we're running how many wells in the winter?
We're about two and a half right now.
Two and a half wells?
Yeah.
In the summer, we're doing?
All 11 of them are running.
11.
Yeah.
So, are we saving this stuff during the downtime?
No, so it basically, what they call it off-gases, or it disassociates, so as it, we have to vent it to atmosphere, so eventually, that chlorine solution will dilute, and so if we know we're going to be running a well, we're going to drain this and refill the tank with the appropriate concentration of solution, so it can be injected properly into the system.
All right, thank you. So, with that, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 24096, approving the purchase and installation of a Myox Chlorine Generation Unit from Filtration Technologies in the amount of $124,725 to be installed at Ralph Capallwell.
Second. Been moved, and seconded. Any other discussion? Comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yeah.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
All right, thanks, Glenn. We are up for a public hearing, and it is Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, planned for 2023 year-end, so we're ending 2023 and the end of 2024. Annual Performance Evaluation Product, and Sherry, take it away.
Mayor and Council, I'm here to give an update and go over some information for our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, otherwise known as the CAPR, which is due each year to HUD, and that is a performance report for, where we ended up after the end of the plan year. So, it's just kind of something that we take, or required by HUD to provide, and we draft up our annual report, and we put it out to the public, give them an opportunity to make comments, and just see how we met our goals that we established in our annual action plan. So, I'd like to go over our presentation and share some program information, and then some highlights of the last plan year, which just ended September 30th of this year. So, we receive the CDBG grant from the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Agency, and it's a grant that supports low-to-moderate-income households through specific allowable activities. The projects usually support those LMI housing projects, but they can include public facility improvements and public service projects. The city first received, or became eligible to receive CDBG funds in 2007. Some key terms for the CDBG program is LMI, which is, stands for Low-to-Moderate Income households, and HUD, their designation of a household whose income earnings are based on 30, 50, and 80% of the yearly area median income. So, they break it down into extremely low income, low income, or moderate. So, those are what we work within when we're choosing recipients for our grant money. We select activities each year, they have to meet one of HUD's national objectives, which is that benefit to those LMI persons, aid in the prevention of slum and blight, or meet an urgent need. Activities that are selected also have to be, meet our annual action plan and five-year consolidated plan goals. We also look at the, when we're looking at activities that we're going to fund, we consider the capacity of the city staff, the size of our community, amount of the allocation, and the capacity of the sub-recipient organizations. Our consolidated five-year plan goals, our first goal is to maintain and increase housing stock, second goal is public facility and infrastructure projects, our third goal is public services, our fourth goal is homelessness assistance, and then our fifth goal is economic development. This is a overview of our plan year '23 budget. We allocated $10,000 to Lake City Center's Home Delivered Meals Program, which, that was completed. We allocated $75,000 to the MRAP program. We completed six of those projects, and we have five additional projects that are in process, and the funds have been committed. We have $201,848 that we allocated to St. Vincent de Paul and Safe Passage for public facility grants, and then we had $71,712 for administration of the program. Some of our goals that were met and not met for plan year '23, we did meet the maintain and increase housing stock, and that was done through our housing rehab program, and then we also met our public facilities goal and our public services. We did not meet our homelessness assistance or economic development in plan year '23 goal, as we didn't allocate any money to those type of activities. Successes, we received $358,560 from HUD, we awarded the $10,000 to Lake City Center, we spent $40,000, just over $40,000 on six MRAP projects, we have $32,000 committed to five more projects, and we awarded that $201,848 in community opportunity grants. Those grants, again, were awarded to St. Vincent de Paul, which helped replace the roof at their Help Center, which is also Region 1's access point, and $76,848 was awarded to Safe Passage, and that's going to be replacing the roof and remodeling the kitchen at their safe house. We also completed some activities in plan year '23, which utilized plan year '20 and '22 funds, which are, Tesh finished their lighting upgrade project, and Habitat for Humanity spent down their remaining plan Humanity spent down their remaining Plan Year 20 funds, which was for the development of the Second Street project. And just a little note, Habitat is having an open house on Monday, December 9th, from noon to 6:00 over at that facility, so you can tour those. I think they have four units completed in that development. For last year, we completed six MRAP projects, one window replacement, a roofing repair, a furnace replacement, two restroom rehabilitations, and installed a new sewer main. So here's some photos of those projects, and we have a little spotlight. We took out a, supported a disabled homeowner by removing a garden tub and putting a walk-in shower so they can have better accessibility to that facility. There's a picture of sewer line getting replaced. That was a 100-plus-year-old clay pipe that was removed and put in something that was much more efficient. We received a thank you from one of our MRAP recipients, thanking the city for the grant, replacing her windows and making her home a lot more enjoyable. Lake City Center serves 350 Coeur d'Alene seniors monthly with their Home Delivered Meals Program that the program supported, and that program serves individuals that are 60 years of age or older and homebound. We provided some training and outreach. In June, we hosted a fair housing training here in the library community room, and that was provided free of charge, and we had a really nice turnout for that. And we're here tonight to take public comments on our draft CAPR, and then we're seeking your approval for us to submit that to HUD for their official review.
Can we ask a question now, or is that, we're just going into?
Yeah, let's ask a couple of questions, and we'll open a public comment.
Okay. Back in the 2023 goals met and not met, one of the ones mentioned not met, homelessness assistance, I'm wondering what kinds of things that typically might be, and if there's some we've done before, but they weren't interested this year, so what would that be?
Well, it would be, we could provide funds for public service activity. We thought we may meet that goal through the grant to St. Vincent, but it's all how we reported it, so we reported it under the facility, so it didn't necessarily tick that box for homelessness assistance. But we feel that the Safe Passage, when they're doing their safe house, roof, and kitchen remodel, they're going to have to house some of those folks that would otherwise be homeless without the facility there. So that's something that we'll be able to meet that goal by housing those folks in the interim at motels or hotels, just some alternative housing so that they still have a place to sleep.
Okay, thanks.
Good questions. Kenny?
Thank you. For your MRAP, how many people applied last year? And if more than you have the money for, how do you make that decision on who gets?
It's a first-come, first-served basis. We had actually 11 applicants that were awarded funds. It's just our cutoff for HUD is September 30th, so we had some projects that the funds were committed. They were in the process of filling out paperwork, but we didn't finish and close out the activity. When we run out of money, we just take those applications and hold them until the next round of funding opens up. So, last year, we, for Plan Year 23 that just ended September 30th, we actually ended with $2,900. We didn't turn anyone away. Every project that was requested was funded for the eligible folks. We all, we normally get some inquiries for people that don't qualify for the program for various reasons.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any else? All right. Thank you so much. So at this time, it's open public. Do anybody who would have any questions or come forward? And I do have a piece of paper you're supposed to sign if you want to speak. Anyone? All right. I'm going to close public comments, and now to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just have one question. I was doing the math here, too, and it looked like it was $25,000 to $100,000 to $3,000 left from the 2023. How much? $2,500-ish, was it?
We have $2,900 of MRAP funds left.
Okay. So, but of the overall 2023 package, that's all that's left?
No, we actually still have, I believe it's $111,000, Safe Passage. They have $76,848 that hasn't been spent yet. So, the way the grant works is they spend the money, and then they seek reimbursement from us.
Right. But that's allocated to them. That's already.
Right. All of our funds have been allocated except for the $2,900.
And then that rolls over into the following year?
Yeah, we can use that, the next project that comes up, we can, HUD allows us to fund projects in the current year, but using any funds in those prior years.
So we don't lose that money?
Exactly. The only time we have, we may have to do an amendment is if we want to move money from one activity to another. So, say we wanted to use the MRAP money for a public service or a community opportunity grant, that's a different use, so we would have to seek a small amendment for that. But as long as MRAP, MRAP, we can use those funds.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the Community Development Block Grant, 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Thoughts, comments? Discussion? Hearing none? Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Need a motion, or a discussion, and then, all in favor?
Yeah, up and down.
Isn't that weird?
Oh, this one's uneasy. I thought this was important.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, moving along. We're going to adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. See if you're paying attention. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.